of the Jewish Federation. And it's my pleasure to welcome you to the New York Armory Unity Center and our first town hall meeting to discuss hate in our community. I'd like to thank Billy Kaplan for making the center available to us, and Barry Lewis, editor of The Times Herald Record, for co-sponsoring tonight's program and for bringing these issues more into public focus. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our incredible panel of religious and civic leaders who are all on the front lines of standing up to hate in their own micro-communities here in Orange County. For those of you unfamiliar with the Jewish Federation, we are the local chapter of an international charity serving the needs of the Orange County Jewish community since 1977. I personally became involved with this work on October 9th, 2016, when a Jewish cemetery in Florida, New York, was desecrated with Nazi slogans and swastikas. It took law enforcement over one year to make an arrest in this hate crime. The teen charged with the crime, Eric Carbonara, was valedictorian of his graduating class and by many accounts was known for espousing neo-Nazi hatred in the halls of his high school. Over the course of this past year, I have been notified of multiple antisemitic incidents, all involving young persons under the age of 21 and most taking place in school settings. Based on this past year's experience, in my opinion, antisemitism in some shape or form exists in every corner of this county. This is why, in September, the Jewish Federation launched the new Zakkor Initiative, named in memory of the six million Jews, Jewish victims of the Holocaust, to fight local antisemitism wherever it lives and breathes. The primary focus of this new initiative is to work with the public schools to raise awareness of antisemitism, bigotry, and hatred, and to promote inclusive and tolerant school cultures. In addition, we are sponsoring community lectures and town halls such as this one because we know that hate doesn't just show up one day on your doorstep. It's something that is taught or modeled in our society. We live today in a different time, in a frightening time where there is a lack of moral leadership and respect for our fellow human beings. It is up to each of us, to each of you, to be the moral example in your families, schools, and communities, to stand up to hate, look it straight in the eye, and say, "You will never win." Our most effective weapons in this fight are love, compassion, and the pursuit of justice. Thank you all for coming this evening and for being part of the solution here in Orange County. Now, I'd like to ask, hand over the mic to Mr. Barry Lewis to proceed with the town hall. Thank you.
Suzanne, I do want to thank the Jewish Federation of Greater Orange County for taking a leadership role in standing up against not just antisemitism, but all forms of bigotry, discrimination, and hate. And really, that's how you combat hate, by speaking up against it, calling it out for what it is. It did not surprise me to know that the number of hate crimes in the United States is on the rise. In 2016, police agencies reported more than 6,700 people were victims targeted by, because of either their race, ethnicity, ancestry, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, or gender identification. That's up 5% from 2015. Last year, there were 241 hate crimes committed at houses of worship. There has also been a rise in the number of hate groups operating in the United States. For the second year in a row, that's according to the Southern Power Law Center that's sponsoring this group. Since 1999, the total number of hate groups in the United States has more than doubled. There are now more anti-Muslim, anti-immigrant, anti-LGBT, white nationalists, neo-Nazi, neoconfederate, and black separatist organizations in this country. Southern Power Law Center reports that the sharp rise in bias incidents, instances of hate crimes, or harassment and intimidation have increased following the election of President Trump. In the first three months following Trump's election, the group recorded more than 1,300 bias incidents. Of that total, more than 25% were motivated by anti-immigrant senators. Nearly 19% of those incidents targeted African-Americans, while nearly 10% were anti-LGBT and another 9% targeted Muslims. But we know these crimes of hate and talk of antisemitism and bigotry took place long before the current administration was in office. The hope is this town hall meeting will allow us a chance to speak freely and honestly about hate that surrounds us on social media, in our schools, our workplace, and sadly, on the campaign trail. We need to recognize how we can split, how we recognize how we can split communities apart and how we can and need to take responsibility to not allow it to spread. This is a town hall meeting, so I'm going to introduce the panel. But more importantly, I would like for you, the audience, to participate. We have a microphone up front, so if you have a question, you can come up. Want to introduce the panel? Starting with my left. Anali Esposito is the executive director for the Orange County Human Rights Commission. She was born in the Dominican Republic and migrated to the United States when she was seven years old with her parents and siblings. Anali earns her bachelor's degree in school psychology in the Dominican Republic and a master's degree in school counseling from Manhattan College of New York City. Anali has experience in training in the domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking fields and was an English-as-a-second language instructor at SUNY Orange for over 10 years. She is the mother of two amazing children, Gabriela and Alessandra, who are being proudly raised in a household where equality and respect for everyone is respected and differences are celebrated. Pastor James Rollins Sr., and that's Rollins, R-O-L-L-I-N-S, I apologize, is the founder and senior pastor of the Tabernacle Church, a multicultural ministry in Middletown. Pastor Rollins serves on the board of several community nonprofit organizations, including chairman of the board for the Hudson Valley Minotaur Enterprises and the Speed Resolution Center of the Hudson Valley. He's the former president of the Middletown ACP and a former city of Middletown councilman. Pastor Rollins earned his Bachelor of Archaeology from Jacksonville Theological Seminary, Bachelor of Science from Rutgers, and his MBA from Rochester Institute of Technology. He is in the last year of earning his PhD. He and his wife Pamela have been married for 39 years. They have three children and five grandchildren. James Yap is the superintendent of curriculum instruction at Warwick Valley. He was previously the director of technology at Warwick Health Central School District and the director of instructional technology and data management at the Ramapo Central School District. In 2011, he was named one of the nation's top education innovators by Converge Magazine. In 2006, James won the Excellence in Teaching and Learning Award from Apple Computer for helping to implement a one-to-one laptop initiative at the New York School for the Deaf. James started his professional career at American School for the Deaf teaching history and English in American Sign Language. He also wrote for Education Week on educational leadership. James resides in My Littleville with his wife for 14 years and two daughters. I went out of order.
You mean this is why, James?
We're all one. The person who I have to skip over is Imam Kusman Khan. He was born in the Bronx to a now-retired New York City supervisor of a basement officer. After completing a BA in history from Cooney Brooklyn College, he taught high school for a year before pursuing graduate studies. He graduated from the Hartford Seminary in Connecticut with an MA in Islamic Studies and Christian-Muslim Relations. In the Muslim community, he has the distinction of completing the formal memorization of the entire text of the Quran. He is currently the Muslim chaplain at Manhattanville College and a chaplain for the Department of Russian in Connecticut. Rabbi Rebecca Pomerich Shinder has been the spiritual leader of Temple Beth Chalom in Clark, New York for 12 years. She was ordained by the Hebrew Union College Jewish Institute of Religion. The rabbi was born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and proud of her ten and two steers. Okay, we're not going to discuss hate, buddy. We're in New York. She lives in northern New Jersey with a husband and three children. She is committed to dialogues such as tonight's program in order to create a culture of tolerance and education for community members of all ages. And I thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your schedule to come here tonight. And the first question I'm going to ask is, why didn't you agree to participate? Why is this important to you? Anali, trust me.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's so nice to see such a big audience, personally. I couldn't say no, Barry. When you are asked and you are given the opportunity to talk about such topics, you just cannot say no. We don't get to say no at our dinner tables. We don't get to say no in classrooms. We don't get to say no. We get to say no on social media. Get to delete those friends or get to ignore those comments. But I think we all have our responsibility and with power and the position that I have comes our responsibility of having these tough conversations.
Suzanne?
I agree with you. Just to make my point, it's critically important for us to remember and understand that while we all may be different on the outside, we're all the same on the inside. We all bleed red. We all have emotions. And we all go through many of the same things. However, there's a history of this country of injustice and inequality. And I certainly want to have an opportunity to impart this panel, primarily because it's easy to aver or to avoid conversations regarding one of the most difficult issues that we face in this country. And this gives us all an opportunity to have an honest and open conversation about the proverbial 800-pound gorilla that resides in the homes or the living rooms of everybody in America. And so I certainly welcome this opportunity to thank the Jewish Federation as well as my panel of colleagues for consenting as well to participate in what I believe is a groundbreaking opportunity to make a difference.
Good evening. Thank you for extending the invitation. To echo my co-panelists, I think that we just don't have the luxury anymore to say no to these types of conversations. We just don't have that ability anymore because our society, especially in the last year, has taken, or two years, I should say, has taken such a drastic turn and brought out such incredible vitriol. Our discourse as a nation, as a community, has descended into complete utter chaos that we just don't have the luxury. We cannot afford to say idly by without at least speaking up and making some type of contribution to quell that tide of hate and bigotry and racism and all these. And I think the most important thing that we have to think about individually and as a community is justice. I think we like to speak about peace, and peace is great. But there cannot be peace if there isn't justice. And so I think that all of these themes are interconnected, and I think justice is what holds them all together. Thank you, Suzanne.
I'd like that. I think a lot of what Barry said, I heard a quote recently that definitely applies to my role in this discussion. It said, "Little boys and girls dream they grow up to men and women that have vision." So it's up to a school district to educate those students, those boys and girls, and make sure that they understand the importance of their actions and the vision that they're about to go forward with.
I would like to echo my colleagues are saying, but really, I'd like to switch the focus to you, which is to say that I think by you being here, you are foot soldiers in the conversation. And I think that the time has come for the conspiracy of silence in a way that we've all put up with has to end, has to end. And so the murmurings that we've all heard about a little bit Suzanne mentioned in our school system that we all sort of either pretended not to hear or tried to warn the eye, those days have to be over. And so I hope that tonight's conversation is the beginning for how we all can affect change in our community to stop.
Thank you very much. Once again, if anybody has a question, just come up right to the microphone. Rabbi, I want to ask you first, what did you think when you found out that someone in your community had painted swastikas in a Jewish cemetery in what I think many would consider a relatively new college part of Orange County? One that seemed to be a very open eye to you?
Well, shocking is the first word. I will say that the morning that we discovered, the act happened at night, the next morning, I stood in the cemetery, which all day was with many of our leaders, and a gentleman drove by in a pickup truck, an older gentleman. And he stopped his truck, he shook his head, and said, "This has never happened here before, never." My friends were in the cemetery. And he shook his head, and he just drove away. So you are right in saying that nothing as aggressive and terrifying has happened before. And yet, there are stories of children in the schools that have shared stories, that only now have shared stories. But Carrie Ann actually told me that her daughter knew the boy and shared with me that the boy, many years earlier, had said something to her, this Jewish classmate, something to the effect of, "Well, you would be the only Jew I would save in the Holocaust, you." That's not the shocking part of the story. The shocking part of the story is the girl didn't tell her mother. She never told her mother. Some of the students, fellow students of this boy, shared after the fact that many of the school administrators also were shocked. This boy, the president of this class, stood on the stage during graduation, kind of honored by. And they were shocked. And some, and the comments coming from the students after the fact. Why were they shocked? They knew who this boy was. Whereas I do hope that we need to learn from this event. We've spent a year grappling with it in our community. I'm a member of my congregation for this year. I have rabbi mentors here. We've talked about this among rabbis in the county. This can't define who we are in the county. But to learn from it, we also... I feel very strongly, we can't just be that temple that that terrible thing happened to, full stop. But rather, the congregation, the community, like that, is open to further dialogue so that this will never happen again.
Suzanne, you have a lot of educators on the panel, but you're kind of a foot soldier. You're in the schools on the back. Are you surprised, what do you hear in terms of within the school system, what kids say, or what they don't realize they heard from the possibly friends and administrators?
Talking with Suzanne over the last year, I actually met Suzanne at the cemetery. Dr. Lee, superintendent of Warwick Valley, I saw her there. And we started to get along right then and there. You know, like, one date that I emphasized at the end of the year with Suzanne is you think that a lot of school districts might have an issue. I don't think that one school district's any more than another. But I think that the difference with Warwick is, you know, we're raising our hand and saying that we're willing to address the problem, we're willing to work through the problem. All of our students who graduate have to do community service. It's a graduation requirement. And through that, they're exposed to different ethnicities, different religions, a big cross-section of Orange County and beyond. So we're trying to address the issue in a lot of different ways. We definitely put more emphasis on it in the past year than in the past. But it's something that has been addressed in the past. I don't want to say that it wasn't, like, downward or aggressively toward it. We see that the issue, we believe, has to do with self-confidence and getting to know yourself before anything else. So we think that, you know, we see it as very much related to two different issues that might seem disparate but are actually very much related. And that's the opioid issue that is prevalent right now, the drug issue that is running through Orange County and other than across the nation because it's all related to having self-confidence of yourself, knowing yourself, and having respect for yourself as well as community.
So if you don't have respect for yourself, then you're willing to not have respect for others?
Right.
I would take a different approach because when I look at what you're talking about, I think it goes a whole lot deeper than what we're talking about. And I say that because in my former role as the president of the NAACP, one of our primary initiatives was to expand or to address the issue of the lack of diversity in the school systems. There are 16 school districts in Orange County. And I can tell you right now that they do not represent what Orange County looks like demographically. School systems are not a microcosm of what we see in America. They're not even a microcosm of what we see here in Orange County. I would venture to say that what we see here tonight is the best of what we can expect in Orange County. It's probably the best that we see in New York. And it's probably the best in terms of our communities. But it's certainly not a representation of what we see in New York State and nationwide. And we have to be bold and we have to have enough courage to address, again, as I said in my opening statement, the 800-pound gorilla that's really in the living rooms of every family. And, you know, this young man, or I bet it could be any other person, but if you grow up, if from kindergarten to 12th grade, the only people that ever teach you are the people that look like you. If you live in a neighborhood where from the time you're born to the time you graduate high school, the only people that you ever see look like you have the same beliefs, then what we've done in essence is allowed a culture and the seeds of who that young man portrayed himself to be to actually be perpetuated. Because if, for whatever reason, he goes into the professional arena, he's going to carry that with him. And so while we're talking about the challenge and the problem, what I'm more looking at is, how do we get to the solution? The law dealt with him. He perhaps, you know, was dealt with in terms of what would happen legally. But what happened in terms of the mindset and whether or not we made strides towards undoing racism?
What's the graduating class size at the school?
We have declining enrollment, but right now, we have around 300.
About 300. Okay, so a chance of getting a dollar. Every kid's getting pretty much a good cent to their classmates from almost kindergarten.
So I work at Manhattanville College, which is in Purchase, New York. And I was reminded with the incident that happened at the synagogue here, we also had an incident last year right at the time of the 800-pound gorilla, as the reverend is mentioning. And there were two incidents on our campus. First incident was somebody had done graffiti on one of the classroom walls that said, "Ethnousums, get the hell out of here." And then, a few weeks later, there was swastikas painted on the dorm rooms of some of the students. And so, now, Manhattanville College is a liberal arts university. So I want us to think about where we locate hate. I think in our minds, we have a caricature of a person who's hateful, a person who's racist. But this type of stuff is so prevalent and it carries on so deeply in some of these people's minds is that you can be at a liberal arts university, be ultra-left or ultra-whatever it is that you like, but this type of stuff is perpetuated. And eventually, they did find that student, and I think he was expelled. But I think really, this notion is far more pervasive than I think we think. And it's not just in schools. I mean, even in higher education, it's a big problem.
Barry, so we like to talk about solutions. And, you know, when I hear us talk about the students that are doing this, the first thought that comes to mind is the teachers, right? Because the teachers are actually the ones who are hearing the comments. The teachers are the ones who are walking the hallways or teaching the students the things that they learn. And one of the programs that the commission runs is called Teaching Tough Topics, where for five weeks, it's a voluntary program. Our teachers sign up to this and decide to talk about how do I help my students talk about these things while I also teach Common Core, right? While I also do the testing, while I also do all this. But what we are hearing from the teachers is, "I don't know how to respond." I've had teachers tell me, I've had students come in with the fear of, "Are my parents going to be home when I come home from school, or are they going to be deported?" How do you teach them mathematics when their concern is, "Is my sister going to be deported next year or next month?" So when we talk about solutions and when we talk about what to do, which is why I think this is so amazing because this is where this happens, is we need to start talking to each other, but also talk to our educators, right? So James, you talked about, you know, the programs. But let's support our teachers and give them those tools.
We've done a lot of that. Tried to have an open environment with a lot of different organizations. Plus, I would say, the whole process. Suzanne provided us with a professional development person to start to look at different diversity issues, look at teaching topics, curriculum, and build that in. We've worked with a lot of different agencies in the area to start with Martin Garner's and all the way up, provide different texts, different books within the classroom. We've launched a... We've launched a overall education. And in Warwick, we've launched a balanced literacy curriculum and part of a district workshop, which involves classroom libraries, and we provide a lot of literature for the students to be exposed to, and also provide a profession development for our teachers in this area.
Yeah, but how can we ask a teacher to teach something that perhaps they may not believe in themselves? Again, we, we can't be afraid of this issue, and the reason I raise that question is because when I talked to the school superintendents regarding the lack of diversity, one of the questions that came over, or should I say, one of the responses was, "Mr. Allen, we can't find minority teachers. We don't know how to recruit minority teachers." And I suggested to them that, you know, I've been taught that if you have the ability to formulate a question, then you should have the ability to be able to form, to formulate the answer. And I found a two-hundred-and-twenty-two-page PowerPoint presentation that was developed by the then-provost Brown University on how to recruit minority teachers. Now, if I can find it, and I'm not in the business of hiring teachers, then why can't you find it when you are in the business of hiring teachers?
We, we do, uh, and one of the first steps that Dr. Leach took was appointing our high school principal that is still there, who's African-American, and we have faculty that are minorities throughout, and that does not represent well. So that was a huge shock to the community, say the least. But we supported Dr. Martin Allen, and he's most deserved his role. He's done a fantastic job. We've added forty courses in the last three years at our high school, and that is largely due to Dr. Washington and Dr. Leach bringing that in. So he's brought the school to a whole new level. It was, and as a minority, we continue to look at minority communities. We've done a lot, we've already built population, including this area, and providing internet access for them at home.
That was something to be noted, yes.
So I first want to thank you all for being here, in my hometown of Newburgh. And to thank the Times Hell Record, I'm a subscriber. Some people still get in the physical paper. The question that I would think about is, how do we, you know, with that eight-hundred-pound gorilla, how do we have those conversations in our own homes? You know, what I do in my houses, you know, we have books with kids of all different colors, and we just, I ordered a thing on Yee Go Go of like LBGQ friendly storybooks. But trying to have different things in our own home to talk to our kids, but, you know, as the, you know, the beautifully profane Avenue Q says, you know, we're all a little bit racist, and how do we prevent passing on, you know, and how do we identify our own fallacies? And then be open about them, because we live in a world where, you know, we live in the perfect Facebook bubble. And, and one question I would ask, you know, the Times Hell Record about, is when we had, when there was a story about this individual, the picture was a filed photo of him in a cap and gown. And I was appalled that that was the photo picked, when I knew if it was an African-American or Muslim, he would most likely be in the, in the orange suit, and here this upstanding white neo-Nazi got a cap and gown. And how do we, how are those, you know, I don't know how those pictures are chosen.
Well, I can tell you with that, like, if he was in court in an orange jumpsuit, we would have had that picture of him. As you scatter the paper, you'll see people, men and women, black or white, in the proverbial orange jumpsuit. He was not in court, and there was no counsel out in the court, so that was where that opportunity was. And I think in some ways, showing him at that point, addressing the graduating class, I thought was pretty poignant. And it was something that I don't think was lost on a lot of people, that was about the last person people would expect to have done this. But I just want to ask the panelists, how about, I'd rather ask the question as to what, teaching them?
If I may, the first step is to recognize that we all have certain privileges, but not everybody has, but not everybody gets. Whether it is the color of your skin, whether it is your education level, whether it is your socioeconomic level, your job, whatever it is. And then start to be okay with being uncomfortable with the fact that you have all of this, that you have to use it towards something. And, you know, I appreciate so much, as you said, you order books about LBGQ to have in your home, and that's a huge step. Because you're teaching your children differences, and you're teaching them not just tolerance, but acceptance and celebration of differences. You know, I'd love to get past the, let's tolerate each other. I have to tolerate the family members that I don't like. Oh, gosh, they need me watching. I'm just kidding, you know, people. Let's accept people for their differences, you know? Let's know the past that they love somebody different, or that they're from a different country, or a different religion, you know? But let's ask them questions like, so what did you have for dinner last night? Or, you know, and when you're at home, talking to your children, or talking to family, or you find that a parent's conversation happened like around Thanksgiving, or birthday dinners, or whatever it is, you're going to have to learn how to push back a little bit. When that, you know, drunk uncle makes a sexist or homophobic joke, you just don't laugh. Don't laugh, and it's okay to tell your child, like, actually, that one was funny, you know? Or it's okay to say, when somebody makes a racist joke, I don't think that's funny at all, you're talking about slaves. What, what, I don't get it. That's hard to do, by the way. What's going to happen is you're going to start getting less invitations to people's homes, because you're going to become that person that is, oh, you're so politically correct, or whatever, you know? They're talking wrong, but standing up for others. So I think being okay with the privilege that you have, and using that to call somebody else out on it. In a country, I mean, you've got to be comfortable with it, it's not an easy process, I'll tell you. And it's not always safe either. But using your voice, and knowing that you're not going to ever be perfect.
And how many of us at the recent Thanksgiving had to pause and maybe not tell a friend or a relative, "That's not funny", when they said that joke, or they made some political or racist comment? And, and is it not time for us to finally say, "No, I'm sorry, I love you, but..." And, and stand up, because chances are, the children in that room who see that and hear that will learn from that.
While I appreciate the approach of, you know, we should humanize one another, I think that really goes without saying. But I think to kind of hone in on something specific, I want to say two things. The first is, at least the panel that's represented here, I think we come from very rich religious traditions. And I think that we have to, as faith communities, we have to re-access that rich tradition and get re-acquainted with it. Because I think there's more there that we can benefit from and bring into our modern life than I think public discourse really lets on. I think the general idea about faith communities and religion is that, you know, this is, this is a museum piece. In fact, it's far richer than that. So I think that's one thing. I think we can really stand to benefit from getting re-acquainted with our, with our particular faith traditions, and bringing that to bear on these types of conversations. And the second thing I want to say that's specific is, which you alluded to in your question, is reading. I, I think, you know, an educator here, I think he can vouch for me that reading is just a lost skill. Not only in students, not only in children, but really in everyone, adults included. I read a statistic some years ago, which said like seventy-five percent of people who graduate college never finish a book from cover to cover after that. So people normally finish college around age twenty-two. From twenty-two to eighty-two, let's say if they live until their eighties, they haven't finished a book. So that's a deep problem. So I think the cure for ignorance, which most of these things are rooted in, I think, reading, and reading everything that you possibly can, and to have a, and to inculcate in people, and in students, young students and people, individuals, a sense of curiosity for the world. I think that curiosity is somewhere, I think, we left a long time ago. To be curious about the world, and to be able to read, just sit and read every day. I think these are incredible skills to have, which will then alleviate some of these, especially at least in our lives.
I would agree, well, they certainly have to expose everyone to the different cultures. The lack of exposure to the different cultures certainly creates a major challenge, not so much in light of whether or not you understand. I believe that the truth be told, we all have prejudices. We can, you know, but there's a difference between prejudice, discrimination, and racism. We all have prejudices. To discriminate requires one to actively make choices. Racism is an altogether different thing. And lastly, I would say, as an exposure tool, we have to remind them that we live in a culture that teaches people, or should I say, culture of silence, but what we don't live in is a culture of accountability.
Question. Well, I think really good points about educating ourselves, our family members, our teachers educating students. A question I have is, I grew up in Orange County, I was about ten years old, living in Monroe. Right on the outskirts, I'm curious for all situations, I didn't know a lot of local, didn't have any local friends. And I remember when a boy went to a girl in the corner, we had to know each other, we played, and we were really good friends. And then one day, I looked, he says to me, you know, my parents found out we're Jewish, and we're not allowed to be friends anymore. And that was the first time I experienced anti-semitism. I remember being shocked and hurt, and asking him, "Well, what about, what about you?" And he said, "I don't want anything to do with you either." And, and it's clear where he got it from, I mean, you know, from his parents. So my question to the panel is, what do we do about, what do we do about them? What do we do about the parents, the people who are, who are supporting them?
Because kids are not able to handle anything.
And I genuinely, as a parent, I don't know what I would do if that happened to my child.
I can tell you what I tell my six-year-old and my three-year-old every single day. I try to, yes, I start it real young. But I try to teach them to learn to stand up for others, so that if they hear that one of their friends that that happens to, so it starts really young, talking to them about how, you know what, sometimes kids have two daddys, or they have two moms. So, you know how we pray every night? Not everybody actually prays sincerely to God. I mean, the little girl wants to be a boy because she wants to do something. And I'm like, that's not how it works exactly, but having those conversations, right? But when it comes with, to adults, this last eighteen months, I've learned that I'm much more patient than I thought I was, because I'm also a very judgmental person, so if you tell me this, I'm like, oh, I cannot believe that's what you just said. We have to, and we've learned that I can't change your mind, because you are now fifty years old, forty years old, six seventy, whatever it is, and I'm not going to sit here and have a thirty-minute argument over it. But can we have a respectful conversation of, I don't see eye to eye with that, I don't, we're not going to agree. It's an ongoing thing. Everybody in this room probably is agreeing with everything we have to say, because we're probably very like-minded. The power of that child is probably not in this room right now, right? That's always a challenge, I think, that advocates have, it's like, how do we get to the other side? How do we reach anybody else? And we just keep saying, just keep talking, just keep doing this. Somebody out there on Facebook Live is watching this, or somebody today is going to go call somebody, or you're going to go at one of those dinners, and they're going to, they're going to hear what you're saying. And the hope is that when they hear you, they're going to realize how terrible they sound, and maybe they'll do it a little less. That's the hope, but do not.
We have to teach them as well, though, that, you know, bigotry is a state of mind. And while we may not like it, we again have to be very candid, very honest about the reality of what happens, especially as it pertains to the adults who are communicating that. And what I find is, more than anything else, you realize that people are going to say things. That's what I teach my, my children in Rolla Bill's, now, have the same issue you do. Our kids are all grown, and we're grandchildren, but you have to give people, you know, the truth that, believe it or not, bigotry, while it's not acceptable, the things that will come out of a person's mouth are protected by the First Amendment. As long as it's not accompanied by violence, they can say almost anything they want. So we have to teach them how to deal with it. And as far as the adults, I'll take it back again to, you know, having a culture of accountability, you know? In addition to, you know, doing away with that culture of silence. I think too often, people think or don't say anything, and without saying, by not saying anything, in essence, you condone it. It's like saying yes. Speak up.
So we have, in our tradition, of gathering for an interfaith Thanksgiving, and for women who have such a shared experience. One of the things that I've talked to my colleagues about, two things to say, one is that this night is very special, and we just had our synagogue. It's great, maybe sometimes it's for some people to cross the threshold of a synagogue, but by just, so for some people, even just coming into a temple is a big deal. But they're not really learning about Judaism, or our culture, or our tradition, or how we worship. And so I said, "Come back. Let's have a round robin, and let's go to each other's houses of worship, not just saying we respect each other, we're all Americans, and hooray for our religious liberties and justice, which of course are very important values, but come and let me show you our sacred texts, and let me show you, and then I want to come to you." And actually, we sat down, I asked them, "Mom, do you have a youth group?", because I want, you know, and that, I think, is so very important. Because it might not be, we can't get to those parents, but it might just be through our houses of worship that we can... I, I'm pretty confident that none of our colleagues are preaching hate in their churches and mosques, and I think that, thank God, we're beyond that. There's a period of time in the country where I couldn't say that sentence. And, but so, and I said, I didn't want to be noticed, that temple that that horrible thing happened to. But I will say that the night before Yom Kippur, if you know this, that we, I processed into the sanctuary with our sacred Torah scrolls, accompanied by ten different faith leaders, all dressed in our religious garments. And before we did so, I said to my colleagues, "If only this happened in the Weimar Hall. If only this were nineteen forty-three, Poland, if we were silent." But now we can't be silent anymore, so I do have faith. And I do have faith that through our houses of worship, because it, they might, they might sit at a dinner table where a dad makes a horrible joke, but if their priest, if there's a picture of their priest next to me, next to you, maybe it's something that isn't so terrible after all. And I think that that is where ways for the future of having not, that not happen to your children, their children.
I think you should look at a film called American History X, if you already haven't. Have you seen it? Okay, yeah, so if anyone hasn't seen that film, you should probably take a look at it. It's about the friendship of a neo-Nazi and an African-American in prison. And so, I don't want to give away the movie, but what I want to say is, one of the ways, I mean, you know, you can write the volume on, you know, your question, but I think one of the ways in which we can combat hatred is through love and through service. And so that, that this service was sort of the underlying, which, the underlying basis between their friendship. And when you see it, I think that comes across. And when you see it, I think that comes across. And so, and I think that's rich in, in the, in our religious traditions as well, is to, is to love your, to love your oppressor, your tormentor. But, you know, not love as, you know, this kumbaya type of thing. No, love that is rooted in justice. And I think Dr. Cornell West says it perfectly. He says that justice and love, justice in action is love. And so there's a very strong connection. So, of course, these things have to be sort of more unpacked in order to fully kind of arrive at a clear understanding of one of these ideas, but I think we can at least begin to think about this.
Wait, go ahead. When I was being interviewed to become Assistant Superintendent of Warwick, they asked me, "What's your educational philosophy, what's your values?" And I responded that there's an acronym, Kent Lancer, called SER. It stands for See the Future, Engage Others, Reinvent Continuously, Value Your Relationships, Value the Data, and Embodied the Values. That's what it stands for. And I was educated in Toledo, Ohio, by an Alboi Jesuit high school, very similar to that, for a proud, and the motto of Jesuits is "Men for Others." So I think that those values are values that I try to pass on to our teachers and how I try to shape the curriculum and instruction of the schools.
We have a question from you.
Yeah, just to sort of bring up a little bit of a different topic. Most times, people identify racism and discrimination with something very overt. What I've found in my life that has been very undercurrent, for example, most people know I'm accurate, I'm very godly. Most people know me for these incredible concerts that I do that are open to the public. And I've been doing it for ten years. Most of my audience, quite rightly, is white. But what I find is that I will be one of, one person of color in a balloon of an organization who I'm trying to go and develop relationships with to help fund these free world-class concerts. And it's a very disheartening feeling that in this day and age that I go to an event, for I will be a part of a special class, an organization, a formal organization in Orange County, and I'm the only person of color. And so my thing is, what do we do to now open the minds of the adults that let us in? I'm here for good. I, everybody who knows me knows, it's all the very god love is all about good and harmony, charity across the board. But I can't do that effectively if you don't let me in the door. And why are you not letting me in just because of the color of my skin? We need to start having that conversation about how the doors are silently closed, and they stay closed only because I'm a little bit darker. Not that I don't give something back.
I would address that in a way that, I believe it was Dr. Eddie Lord Jr., the theologian, and the professor, Princeton person, talks about the different gaps that we are all aware of. Talks about, you know, we're all aware of the education gap. And we try to address in terms of how it plays out, leading to inequality, the income gap. Then, of course, he talks about there is a learning gap that we all recognize that's intimately connected with our educational system. But Dr. Lord talks about a very unique area that I think probably fits what you're talking about, and that is the values gap. Talks about a gap that, you talk about the values gap, you're talking about that word that we don't want to talk about, and that word is white privilege. And that word gets a lot of bad press, and everybody's afraid to say it, talk about it, or deal with it. But the reality of it is, when you look at a values gap, what you're looking at is whether or not a person understands and values another human being the same way that they would like to be valued. It's a sad day when you find yourself in a situation when you feel as though the color of your skin is a birth defect.
Yes.
At my school, there was a swastika found in one of the bathrooms. And over the announcements, they haven't said anything, anything about it. And so... My question is, what should you do when no one's doing that?
Well, I would like to say, you're doing it right now. Let's go. Great for you, great for you, and great for your mom for bringing you here and being a part of this conversation, because you know what? You are not alone. You are not alone. And there is, we've talked about, a silence. And what we need is for people like you, strong people, to call us all out on what is injustice. It is injustice. So I think that one of the next steps is to talk about it with other kids, right? It's not just about, it's my experience, and it shouldn't matter if you're Jewish or Muslim or Buddhist. It's wrong. It's wrong. And I know there's been a conversation in one of our local school districts about the appearance of a swastika, where we, we don't condone the degradation of someone's beliefs. That's not what a swastika is about. A swastika is not about saying Judaism is wrong, or your belief is wrong. It's about hate, it's about intimidation, it's about fear, it's about discomfort. And so, a great counterbalance to that is to say, "I'm afraid, and you can't hate me." And if this symbol doesn't represent us here in Orange County, I think that's what we all want to say. One of the things, again, we're talking, hate is not welcome here. Not talking about antisemitism is welcome. Hate, discrimination, bigotry, and silence isn't welcome here. So the more you talk to your friends and your classmates and your teachers, and you talk to your neighbors and members of the PTA, and your principal and your superintendent, that's how I think we're going to start to change the tide of silence, of this conspiracy of, well, it doesn't, it doesn't happen to me, doesn't affect me, I don't see it, I don't, no. The more we say, we do see it, and it's real, and it's here, and it's affecting us, and we won't take it any longer. Good for you for bringing this issue to us all. Please cover the paper.
Wow, so much trouble, it's time to have a conversation. For the record, please put that picture in the front page tomorrow. It will become the conversation, I'm sorry, it will become the conversation, and she wouldn't have to explain it anymore, because everybody else is, "What's that picture about? Oh, I told them what happened in my school, and that's why the picture's in the front page." You can make it happen.
I actually wrote a letter to the board. I was very upset about the softness of the language they put in the letter. They did send a letter to the schools, but it was very perfunctory. So I'm actually attending, anybody in the Alboi School District, on the eighteenth board meeting, I'm going to speak to the board. I would invite anybody else who's a member of the district. I think especially Carrie Wade, to have students there as well, to, you know, I'm gonna hold the board accountable for this, that more news can be done. So I found the website, our ball, as well.
All right, I'm here, I want to confront the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. I love it, I passed it. What I'm saying is, I don't think diversity is great, but diversity doesn't fit in on certain, you know, on every level, in every job. Say, you don't see too many Asian NBA basketball players because of genetics. So what I'm trying to say is, it isn't tolerance, we need to learn to respect one another. And I believe that that's every parent, teacher, religious leader. We have to teach our own people to respect each other in that role different, whether we're handicapped, whether we're white, black, it doesn't matter. I applaud you all for being here, and you made great points this evening. What I wanted to say was, the statistic you're demonstrating tonight is, we have more racism or hatred today than we did years ago. What's changed in society? What I see that's changed in society is, we've become more sensitive, more political correctness, more, we can't say this, we don't want to talk about this. It's like politics. Many parents will say, "We don't discuss politics, we don't discuss religion." Maybe we should. Everybody on this board, if I mention the name President Donald Trump, whether you like him or not, in your own households, when that name is spoken about, you may say, "Oh, God, that's where the hatred begins, right there. He's our president, and we should respect him." When Barack Obama, as a former president, Barack Obama, was our president, I would have took a vote for the man. I didn't vote for him, but I respected the title and the position he held on the world stage. He's the leader of the free world, he was our president. My president, your president. I would love to meet the guy, I would love to sit down and have a great conversation with him. I would disagree with most of the things he presented to our country, but I would respect him, because of who he is and what position he held. Just like our new president, we must respect him. We've got to respect each religion, each person, each gender, familial status, whatever it may be. But each of us are the ones who have to teach it to our own. That's what I want to say.
Are we too sensitive? Are we too politically correct? I think, you know, the issues, the points that you brought up about Donald Trump and about why there is such a reaction towards him, I think it's less about political correctness than it is about telling Muslims, for example, that you're not allowed and welcome in this country anymore. I was born here, so where am I going to go? I think it's not a matter of political correctness when you're recorded privately saying you're going to grab women by certain body parts. I don't think it's political correctness when it's telling Mexicans that they're rapists and murderers. So, yes, I agree with you. Yeah, maybe we can work on our sensitivity, we can be more open, we can have more respect, yes. But that, which is coming from our president, is beyond the pale of respecting public discourse. And I think we, as people, the people, we have the right to say, "No, we will not tolerate that." If you want to be, you are the president, then act like it. So individually, personally, yes, I can sit with Trump and hear him and speak about substantive issues, and there can be healthy debate and disagreement, like you mentioned with the previous president. But I don't think there is a type of discussion to be had when a person has said the things that that man has said. I think it's embarrassing for the United States.
Yeah, I just want to say, Barry, to answer your question. I don't think we're too sensitive or politically correct. I think what's happened is that the people in the bottom of the joke are empowered to speak up. And I think that the allies are no longer standing by and saying, "Oh, it's okay to make that racist joke or sexist joke, et cetera." No, I think people are now empowered to say, "No, that's not funny." And I think one of the things of social media has given us a platform to use our voices. In addition to these conversations, people now have the space and the power to do that.
I'd just like to follow. I don't know where our president ever said Muslims weren't allowed in the country. I, Muslim ban.
He banned Muslims.
Excuse me?
He banned Muslims from coming into the country.
No, 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 not all Muslims. He banned certain Muslims from certain countries from coming in that aren't vetted well enough. Not Muslims from every country. Because there's certain countries where Muslims can come from. There's Muslims living in Canada, they can come here. There's Muslims living in Austria, which, my family member came from Austria, they can come here.
Why would you want to target, though, one group? Why would you want to target Muslims?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. And I'm not saying, I'm not here to debate with you about it. I'm saying, as a Muslim leader, I respect you because the education that you saw, I guess you learned about capitalism and Islam and the differences were, delightlessness. That's great. But remember, each of our own groups, including the Muslim, Islamic people, they have to, when there's something going on, those leaders should be the ones that first come out and lose in condemning actions, whether it's an African-American, black American, Hispanic, a white American, an Irish American. We should come out and say, "This is not our people," and condemn it. Because others see that the silence from certain groups, and I'm not just picking on Islamic people, when there's silence from certain groups about some kind of hatred, that's the problem. The first people out of the gate should be people that reflect and represent either a class, a gender, whatever. And I don't want to, I'm not going to stand up for our president's language. He's not the only one that ever said anything like that. It's wrong. As if I was a female and I was around him after hearing those things, I would feel uncomfortable. But I think that's the problem. Like I said, we've got to teach respect, and our own people need to come out and condemn, we need to first to condemn the hatred. And if we can do that, I think everybody else will say, "Okay, great. They're not all, that group doesn't represent, isn't represented by that single or those people."
One of the biggest misconceptions that's out there is precisely what you just stated, is that Muslims do not condemn acts of terror and acts of violence. In fact, this is so demonstratively false. Every single Muslim organization that exists in North America, the United States, and Europe, and in fact, all over the Muslim world, whether you take the Ashar Seminary in Egypt, which is the oldest and largest, go across the board. Anywhere you find a Muslim organization, you will find condemnation after condemnation after condemnation of every single act of terror that's happened. So it's just wrong. It's false. It's just not true, one, one, one moment. So I think, I think we have to sort of broaden our horizons to get to know the community that we're basing these absolutely false misconceptions on. So, you know, it's just wrong.
How, how, we can, fear in this area drive hate. Yes, we had a president who, from day one, Mata Bellevol, to not allow Mexicans to come in. And we have a president who, Tota, not allowing and deporting Muslims. And we've had county leaders using Kirish Joel and others in the county as a fear, and throwing out the words "hate" to incite concern and issues. And I'm curious how much you experience that driving, that hate, is the fear of other groups, which we've seen done in throughout this country?
I would like to point to media in all stages and forms that what you just taught... that what you just taught everyone, that didn't make it as a headline story, right? That doesn't sell, forgive me, papers. And I think that the rhymes of social media that you had mentioned before, it's very easy for people to spread misconception and hate. Robocalls is another new part of the landscape. I myself received a robocall, at least before the election, that had so much fear and hate that I thought it was related to what happened at the cemetery, was saying that, you know, the Jews in Israel have taken over our presidential election, and there was all kinds of very hate-mongering language, and hummin' the gale playing in the background. And I was, I didn't know what was happening. And I'm a pretty well-educated person, and... So I think that not all of the right stories are making it to our living rooms or our Facebook feed. And I think that, you had mentioned KJ, that not all of us understand, and not all of us, not all of our neighbors are, look like KJ people. So, wait, you're Jewish, how is that, how are you the same? And not every resident of Kirish Joel wants to dismember local government or school systems. We can't paint everything with a wide brush. So I think that part of the landscape is changing because of, because of social media, because of perhaps a more discriminating lack of meaning, what stories are we going to share, to whom are we going, who are we going to interview to talk about reaction of a terrorist act? And I think that we all have to be accountable. Just because you can Google something, doesn't mean that that's research, right? Opening up a book, at least when you read a book, you can vet what was written, who was it published by, who were the guys writing something about the author on the back? These are, when you read a blog, people can say whatever they want in a blog. You know, if it's, you know, if it's, you know, on a computer screen, then it must... You know, we all have to be more discerning and demand more responsible conversations.
Well, let's be honest about it. Quite a bit of this is cultivated, or has been cultivated, in our culture. Again, that's the eight hundred pound gorilla that's in the room. When you want to talk about it, I can take you all the way back. I can take you back to slavery, which nobody wants to hear about today, and its impact on the culture of America. When you hear about references that there is a particular ethnic group that pervades terror, that is not accurate, because I can tell you right now, the Ku Klux Klan was practicing terror. And they were doing it under the auspices of Christianity. And I'm telling you that fear is the thing that's used no matter what. It is one of the greatest things that's been used to divide us. The old Baptist preacher, Adrian Rogers, used the photography analogy. We talked about fear. He said, "Fear is a dark room where negatives are developed."
Barry, I want to add that somebody mentioned earlier about a picture on the paper of the person graduating. And I think it speaks to what we're talking about, holding each other accountable. We're all responsible for that. If you see in the paper, headline after headline, that says KJ, that says Hasidics, that says... And you feel a way about it, don't say silent. Call the paper, call Barry, and say, "Hey Barry, what's up with that?" If an elected official says something that you're bothered by, they have open-door policies. "Hey, Mr. So-and-so, I have a question for you, what's going on?" We're all responsible for that. We have to, we have to hold each other, we have to hold ourselves accountable, because at the end of the day, they may have an answer for you. They may say, what Barry said earlier, actually, people missed the point of that picture. It was to show that you wouldn't have expected it, when in reality, the impact of it was completely different. And I think that goes a lot to say with media, and the impact of, you know, whatever it is that you're writing, that reporting is.
Let's redefine homeland security. How about if you see something, say something? Change the definition of homeland security?
I wanted to just add a point. If you read the reports that are published by the FBI themselves, the FBI themselves research and publish that the greatest domestic threat in the United States, this is by the FBI, all right? I could say a lot of things about the FBI, but... This is by the FBI, the FBI says that the greatest domestic threat in the United States is by white militia groups. So, I think, when I was speaking about media, I have stopped watching TV. I've stopped watching news, I should say. CNN, MSNBC, I don't go for it anymore. I think there's other ways that we can learn. Print journalism is a far better way to go. I think we're better off cutting that TV, cutting that mainstream corporate nonsense. I think we're better off intellectually, and when you do that, then I think the world opens up. And if we kind of stick with that, I think we're just, it's called echo chambers.
Is that part of the tribalness that we have? We talk about having a tribal community in which we listen and we watch only what we want to hear and see. And if you're to the right, you're going to watch Fox, if you're to the left, you're going to watch MSNBC. And so you're constantly going back to the source of only what you want to hear, what you only want to read. How much does that play to you?
That's one thing that, you know, is a common lesson, that try and show the students it's the big echo chamber that is out there. And make sure that they do get different perspectives, it's a big skill. As we were spoken before, reading and writing is like you have to be in right order and not to show different opinions and show different sides of an argument. So, I agree with what you said, we have to avoid that echo chamber. Because then you're just, you're going to go from the far left to the right, basically, because of just starting to hear yourself again and again through different voices, but it's really yourself, all over again, then that's what's going to happen. So I think it's important to, what was said before by the reference, you know, expose yourselves to different cultures, different communities, and gravities, and religions as well. Expose yourself to as many as possible. I grew in a multilingual house, in the largest extent possible. My father was from Peru, my grandfather, his father was from China. My mother was Irish, and I'm American. So, yeah, I can check those different ones. So, I think that, and my family grew up in Detroit, Michigan, and moved to Toledo, Ohio, and that's when I first started working with the deaf community. So, I had a lot of different exposure to a lot of different cultures. And I've always been very thankful to that. So, I think that has kind of guided where we're going. I wanted to, more widely in the school district, and try and expose them to those different cultures.
Well, we're talking about putting this together, someone said to me, "Well, maybe we should get, maybe we should recruit religious leaders or community leaders." And I thought, "Well, we have an interfaith council, and we have a human rights commission in this county. And do we really need another organized group? Or do we just need for these groups to either do a better job of communicating what they do, better communication with the public, maybe using the newspaper, or just kind of getting themselves together and discussing what needs to be done?"
There is so much room for us to improve our communication. The amount of work that we individually do at this table that don't even know about each other, right? One of the things that I've taken on as a task, and there are people in this audience that I recognize from everywhere, is kind of start to meet the people and say, "So what are you doing, what are you doing?" And I am always shocked at how many groups are already working on grants, groups meetings, whether it's at their local churches, or their houses, or their meetings, et cetera, of how to have better conversations with others, how to talk about racism, how to talk about... But nobody knows about it. So I agree, I think that starting to network there, starting to exchange phone numbers and exchanging email addresses, and one of the things that the commission does is we have three monthly social justice and racial justice networks. One in Newark, one in Goshen, one in Warwick. And that's really just to kind of centralize. So if you're doing this in this area, come to this meeting, because maybe you can talk about it together, or get better at it, so I agree.
And the Human Rights Commission is going to be having a session on December fourteenth?
Yeah.
A community of difference, anti-bias, and discrimination training, what's up?
Yeah, so as part of our initiative to provide awareness and education around a bunch of different issues, next week we're hosting a training. One is on domestic violence, and specifically, how to promote human rights for victims and their children, victims of domestic violence. And then on the fourteenth, we have the Anti-Defamation League that's coming in, and specifically presenting on discrimination, anti-bias, and antisemitism. And how do we, how do we look in ourselves and see where our bias is? And then how does that come out forward when we're working with others? And how do we get some still sense on that?
And people want, can you go to the website and watch the mission, then we'll give you a call?
Yeah, so through the county website, you will always be able to find the human rights information. We're also on Facebook, we're at flyers of what we're doing. We do it four to five different trainings throughout the year. Last month, we had one on specifically gender transitioning and misgendering in the workplace. Talked about the challenges that trans people go through. So we definitely have a lot of different topics.
I want to kind of wrap this up, trying to move this forward. And certainly are more than willing to go out into other communities. And we spoke to panel members, and they were thrilled about doing this and wanting to do more of these. But I guess, after listening, and as you said, to some degree, I think we are preaching to a choir. But I also hope that there is some level of awareness in people hearing, listening, and reading. Just across the board, moving forward, how do we make inroads into hate? This is certainly one of the ways, but there's a lot of other.
I think the end dialogue group will always be the answer. I think dialoguing with your neighbors, dialoguing with your family, regardless of who you voted for, right? Just talk to that person, ask them questions, be okay with that person upsetting you and saying things, you know, do it in a safe way, disagree, but I think continuing this conversation, it cannot end here, and it cannot end with just the neighbor you have right next to you. Bring it home, bring it to your work, you know? Ask your coworkers, or ask your supervisors, "Why don't we have more diversity in this workplace? Why don't we have this?" Or, "I would like to see a little bit more of this." But in the end, I think it's definitely dialogue.
I think we have to, again, reclaim what it means, or understand what it means to be accountable. The culture of silence has got to stop. It doesn't work, it has not worked, and I'll be the first to say that we've made some progress. The unfortunate thing about progress is that it's not sustainable. Progress has, you have to continue to work on it. Because when we look at it, I can remember that the attitude of many when they had, we had in this country, the first black president. And I say "black" as opposed to African American, because there's been an evolution of how we even address blacks. It went from being Negro, to being Afro-American, to being African American, to being black. All of its culture. But if we begin to recognize that the importance of reaching out to one another, and also addressing it in our faith communities, just as Iman said. You know, I find that past me, what I say to my congregation for that couple of hours on Sunday morning, is probably the easiest part of my job. It's the Monday through the next Saturday where the challenges are in terms of making sure that the people who sit under the sound of my voice get to hear and talk about real things that happen in our communities every single day. A culture of accountability will destroy the culture of silence.
One of the greatest civil rights leaders in this country, Malcolm X, said that when he was in prison, he said that the prison library was such a library that it was the envy of universities. And Malcolm X would sit and read until 3:00 or 4:00 a.m. in the morning in his prison cell. And when the lights would turn off, he would go and he would sit at the corner of his, of the actual cell bars, and he would use the hallway light to carry on reading. And he was, you know, apart from the caricature of Malcolm, he was far, he was a deeply intellectual, learned human being. And his contribution to the public discourse about hate is something that I think all of us owe it to ourselves to revisit and take a look at once again. And I say that to say that we can at least equip ourselves with knowledge, and learning, and reading, and understanding, and reflecting, and writing, even if it's just for ourselves.
You stole my thought, Barry. I think that it definitely has to do with, especially from my seat, which is a biased seat, it has to do with education and starting early. And caring, work forward, and not losing your focus and keeping your eye on progress. I can't really say it any better than what was already said.
I'm so emboldened by all of you being here. I think this is a fabulous first step. I think the next step would also be, I would love for us to reach out to members of the UN community, maybe members of different student government bodies, that it's not just, you know, those of us with gray hairs, pardon, that we really invite our kids to be a part of this conversation. There's an oft-quoted poem attributed to a German pastor in the 1940s, there are different versions of the poem, but it goes something like this. "When they came for the communists, I said nothing, that's not a communist. When they came for the trade unionists, I said nothing, that's not a trade unionist. And you see how it works, till no one was left to say anything for me." I think that what we, in 2018, need to do is to rewrite that poem and say, "When they came for, or when they attacked, or when they bullied, or when they tried to intimidate whatever group, I said something." Because it was wrong. Not because it was me, or my brother, or my family member who happens to be married to somebody of a different race, or... It's just wrong. It's wrong. And once we all write that poem together, then we'll be in a much better place.
Barry, your last poem that Dr. Martin Luther King wrote before he was assassinated was titled, "Where Do We Go From Here?"
On that note, I want to thank my panel. Anadi Esposito, the Executive Director of the Orange County Human Rights Commission, Pastor James Rolland of the Tabernacle Church in Bittertown, Usman Khan, Muslim Chaldean at Manhattanville College, James Yav, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructional Services in the Warwick School District, and Rabbi Rebecca Shinder from Temple Beth Shalom in Florida, New York. I also want to thank Suzanne Lyon and all the folks at the Jewish Federation of Greater Orange County for helping us put this together. We want to thank Phil Kaplan, Lisette Martinez, and the fine staff at the Newburg Armory United Community Center for their help. Fundly, hate climbs the ban priority attention because of their special impact. They not only hurt one victim, but they also intimidate and isolate a victim's whole community and weaken the bonds of our society. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight, thank you very much.